Page on the back until the end with public comments is, and then we won't take any more signatures. And I'll announce it. Just in case someone, yeah. Perfect. Okay. Yeah, I'm fine. It's just a long day. Oh, so I went to dermatologist again, so we got the blue light specials, what they call it. It's weirdly strange, but anyway. They looked at my head, hmm, what's it, a couple of months ago? And so he says, well, we can just freeze it out, we can give you this treatment, which should really work much better because it covers your whole head. I said, okay. So they put this, they even sand down a little bit areas, and then they put this lotion on, and you sit there for an hour with a shower cap on, not there. He said, yeah, first time, thank God, I got a cap. They said, yeah, just go in the lobby and wait. And I said, oh. For an hour, right? Well, I stuck this thing in there, and it was sticking out, and it was kind of goofy. And then they, they have this light that they bring over and take that off, and they put it in. And I thought they said an hour. They turn this thing on, and it's intense, and I thought, oh my God, I can't stand here for an hour. And I thought after five minutes, I'm going to just say, I give. Well, finally, I hung in there, and they come in, okay, you're done. I went, it was an hour, but I wasn't. So I can't find out today for the woman, she was much better. Sixteen minutes and forty seconds. I don't know why that amount, but that's what it was. So, um, but this time again, I took the, the cap thing, I went in the bathroom, and I put her in, got my cap down. Time while we got some coffee, came back. So they did, yeah, so now they did this, and it should last for like two years. But my head's ruined, and I gotta be careful where I go. Like, the first time I was in pain, it's just, it was, it was, oh my God, I had to run to the car. That's fine. I didn't want to wear caps. I wasn't going to read the whole thing. Well, we'll have to be hard to. Tomorrow, in the morning, if you're single. But I want to read the whole thing tonight. Don't you think? And we had them write this, but then they came up with one that was like. This is the shorter version that gives. And I said, it's, we can lay down to this. Are we ready?
Ready?
No, no, I can't get on. Takes me three times.
Think we're ready. So it's being six o'clock, and we call the Coos Bay City Council meeting to order. Would you all rise and join me in the place of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. So, public comments is at the end of the, uh, meeting this evening, and so anyone interested, uh, please sign up. We'll go off that sheet. Anyone on the signature for public comments will go off that and reference those individuals. First thing, uh, we have, uh, councillor Stevens virtual this evening online, and also councillor Matthews. And we want to add an item. We're going to do an appointment to the Budget Committee, so let's make that the first action item. So that being the case, uh, how do you like, we have the consent calendar. How would you like to proceed with the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar is submitted. We have three grants for the library on there, which is great, so, anyway. Uh, any of the comments or discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. As I said, the first item on there is going to be appointment to the Budget Committee. We did an interview earlier today, and McKinley Prado is on, uh, we interviewed, and she's the applicant. We needed one position to fill. And we were at a meeting at the library, and she said she heard that we had an opening, and so, uh, she went and filed for that position, and I'm sure glad that she did. It's nice to see individuals in the community get involved, and so, great. So with that being the case, council, um, any discussion on this? If not, I need a motion and a second to approve the nomination, or the appointment, I should say.
I'd like to make a motion to accept McKinley Prado, uh, to the Budget Committee.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve McKinley Prado to the Budget Committee appointment. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. Look forward to working with you. Uh, next item, consideration to approve, approval to the amendment to the city fee schedule. Approval would require adoption of Resolution twenty four ten. Melissa.
Good evening. So every year, we update the city fee schedule for the mortgage fees, which is based on the MCI, the Municipal Cost Index. When we update the fee schedule for that, the department's review, just to make sure that the fees are in line with the cost of services. So we had, in this proposed, uh, resolution, it included the mortgage fees that were, um, updated. We had a formatting error in the planning section. We moved a fee from type one review to type two. And then we added a public works plan review fee of a hundred and forty dollars, which is, um, to cover the cost of reviewing any plans that aren't covered under any other fees, and it is in line with, uh, the other review fees that are charged.
Do we have any, uh, comments or questions for Melissa on this? So, do we have someone that oversees the, uh, mortgage there or the boats?
We have a harbor master.
We do. He, it's a volunteer, uh, position. Um, I don't know if we land with harbor master for sure, because there's a lot more that usually falls in that, um, category of a position. But it is volunteer, um, they essentially get the cost of being on site, uh, you know, covered for them, just like we do, uh, for our camp hosts that are throughout the city's parks.
So there's someone there to oversee the, the shifts there, the volunteer, someone comes in, or if there's an issue, right?
And he maintains a, kind of a map of the facilities, so we kind of know where people are at. It helps, you know, he's interacting with the finance team to make sure we're doing, uh, billing as appropriate for those mortgage, um, fees associated to being there.
Uh, comments, council? All right, hearing none, so how would you like to proceed?
I move we approve the changes to the city's fee schedule by adoption of Resolution twenty four dash ten.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve and amend the city fee schedule, uh, of twenty four dash ten. Any other comments? Hearing none? I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Adoption of, of Resolution twenty four dash eleven, approving an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the city of Coos Bay and Urban Renewal Agency for de jure financing. Melissa, you're on again.
Yeah. As stated in O R S four fifty seven, urban renewal agencies operate under tax incremental revenues. Those revenues can only be spent towards payments against debt service. So there are two ways to get access to those operational revenues. Um, one is a lengthy and more costly process of conventional financing, which is request for financing, financial advisors, bond counsel. This process is for long-term capital projects. The second option is de jure financing. Uh, this creates a short-term loan in between the city and urban renewal agency. It's repaid generally within, uh, a couple of days. There's interest paid on the loan, and it makes those funds available to cover for current short-year, or short-term projects in those districts. Uh, the projects need to be identified already within the plans, such as the improvement program grant. Um, so what you have before you is a resolution to approve the de jure financing, establishing an intergovernmental agreement between the two bodies, which will establish the dollar amount and repayment process, and you'll see this again come before the urban renewal agency.
Okay, and so, uh, what's the period of time on this? It's just an overnight thing, or a day, or a week?
Usually it's two, three days.
Okay. Comments, council, from Melissa on this? I think this is something we do every year, but.
Correct.
I just have, sorry, just some clarification. So is there, it takes three or four days to get it from urban renewal?
No. We just do, um, it's a, essentially a very short-term loan that we're paying. We do one percent interest over those two days.
So, I mean, that, that's nominal, but sorry if I seem ignorant, but if we're, we're working with U R A to get it, and we just have to wait two more days to get it from them, is it necessary to do the bridge loan? I mean, I guess I'm saying, what, what precipitates us having to use that bridge loan instead of just waiting two days for it to come through? Sorry.
So, we used to have to borrow money in the past. We would have to actually get a loan and be in debt. That's what were the stipulations on U R A.
So, it's, let's see if we can get some clarity around this. So, uh, urban renewal operates in tax increment financing. So we know, uh, generally, we budget for the dollars in tax revenues that we would get in. It operates in a state of debt, so we can only use those dollars to repay debt. We have outstanding loans that we've gone to banks for large projects, you know, something that's, uh, three to ten dol, or ten million dollars. Uh, this, so right now, uh, in those two districts, those two loans, they're still tax increment dollars that aren't paying debt. And this is a way to still pay debt, which is within O R S. Uh, it creates a short-term loan. It is only, um, it's not a bout of money coming in, it's just converting those tax revenues to a debt payment, and then those funds become available for use. So it's, otherwise, we would keep those funds on the books until we went out and got a long, larger, you know, note issuance with the bank. So we're just using those for annual kind of projects.
But we're eventually getting the money to cover that cost.
We already have it, so the way urban renewal works is it comes into special revenue, that's where taxes come in, and it gets transferred over to the debt service fund to pay debt.
Okay.
There isn't a way to access those proceeds of the debt for that incremental balance that we don't have debt for. So, for example, if I went to the bank and said, give me three million dollars, I now have debt proceeds I can go do projects with. If I have, uh, a million dollars of tax revenue and two three hundred thousand dollar debt payments, I still have four hundred thousand dollars of tax increment I need to do something with. I can't access that unless I have a loan to pay.
So, if, if I can check my memory real quick, because urban renewal was very confusing when I caught it.
It is.
I ended up talking to a guy that was running for treasurer to understand it. I feel like it's more of a statutory quirk.
It is.
Urban renewal has to at some point indicate it had debt in order to operate.
Got it. So we don't ever operate in the surplus?
No.
We, the money's there fictitiously until we do something with it, and then we pay for it.
Well, it's legitimately there, because it's tax revenues.
Right.
In a nutshell.
And we come at the very beginning and say, here's our plan, and here's what we believe it will cost to implement that, and this is how much debt we would need to incur over the life. And so we have to keep track of that debt as it.
It's sort of like bonds, where if I, if I, I can log a paper loss, but it's only a paper loss until I cash that bond, and then take the loss, which, I got it.
And so we have two entities. We're just able to create that short-term loan in order to.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
So, McKelley, there'll be a test at the Budget Committee about this. Okay, so, council, how would you like to proceed?
I move we adopt Resolution twenty four dash eleven to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Coos Bay and the urban renewal agency of the city of Coos Bay, and authorize up to one million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars and a hundred and ninety-six dollars in de jure financing budget to fund planned projects, of which four hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and fourteen will be for the Empire District, and one million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars for the downtown district.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt, uh, Resolution twenty four dash eleven for de jure financing. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. Uh, C, consideration to approve the purchase of a, uh, excavator for the water quality division. Mike? It's nice to see you up here.
Thank you. Um, the background is, uh, the city water quality division does a nineteen ninety-five backhoe. That's what we used to do all of our line repairs, trenching, digging. Well, it's twenty-nine years old. A backhoe is not the best piece of equipment for trenching and digging. An excavator is way more suited for that kind of work. Uh, we've been researching everything we would need. Two hundred thousand dollars would cover the cost of the excavator, all the different attachments, the digging buckets, the hammer, the, uh, compaction plate. The, uh, way we would like to purchase is, is through the cooperative procurement method, which we have a few different companies, but Sourcewell is the main one. They, uh, give us the government rate, so that's usually a twenty percent savings, along with competitive pricing. They've already shopped around and, and done the work to see who is going to give us the best deal. And we would like to do, get pre-approved with that, because often we'll pick out a piece of equipment, and then it's gone by the time we come to get approval. So then we're back, back in line again. The budget implications, uh, the funds will come from the Water Quality Fund Three, our capital outlay for vehicles. They will be split evenly between Plant One, which is, uh, the G L codes of thirty-three hundred, Plant Two. Do I need all these? This, then the collections, uh, Sewer and Storms, all four different entities of the water quality team will share it evenly.
So this has been budgeted for, obviously, hopefully?
Yes, we're, we're prepared.
Okay, so, um, we don't know what the cost is, but we know it won't exceed two hundred thousand?
Correct. That was, well, while we were pricing, that was top of the line, and we're still demoing. It's, we don't necessarily need, if that is the best option for us, but we'll see, you know, maybe a different brand is less.
So do we go off for an R F P on this, or do we just, how do we do that?
Because of, uh, the, the Sourcewell company, the procurement, they, yeah, the property purchasing, they've already, it's, we've purchased other things that way, and they do all the, all the work, and they can provide us with quotes of, hey, this is what these guys, these guys, but they, they do that work for us.
Okay. So, um, just so everyone knows, and the public, uh, we, we'll look at other options and cost, just to make sure this is the best one.
Correct.
Okay. Comments, anyone?
What's the average life of an excavator?
Well, we should get thirty years out of it if we maintain it, take care of it, like we, we plan to.
Okay, thank you.
We have a home inside, it's not going to be out in the weather.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, a couple of things. Um, so does, will the old one get surplus? So someone will pick it up?
We will probably keep it. There's still a little use for a backhoe in, in some areas. It's advantageous, plus the, the bucket for lifting and moving material.
Okay.
So, uh.
And we're looking at new?
Correct.
Okay. And is this used every day, off and on, all day? So I guess my point is the feasibility of having private contractors do it is, doesn't really make sense. It's not cost-effective.
No, we come out way ahead to do the repairs. We may not use the excavator every day, but we're going to be project after project. You know, there'll be times where the crew will be cleaning lines or cammering, televising lines.
Yeah, and you do have a cover chop, and you guys do the maintenance on it?
Yep.
Yeah. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to say about the, uh, cooperative procurement, it's, it's a good system. I worked with it when I worked at B A. They, they come in pretty good on their pricing. We were able to get better on toilet paper, but other than that, they did really good.
Okay. Uh, so council, would you like to proceed?
I'll move to approve the purchase of an excavator in accordance with Resolution twenty-two dash zero-two, Section Five, Title Policy, Subsection B, two, allowing the use of cooperative procurement for an, an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution twenty-two dash oh-two for an excavator for the water quality division. Uh, any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. Uh, D, consideration to approve an amendment for the Front Street Green Parking Lot. Jennifer?
Thank you.
This just keeps going.
So just for a little background, um, at the July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, council awarded the contract to construct the green parking lot at North Front Street, Knight River. So this parking lot is located along North Front Street between Cedar and Date, and it's a Brownfield site. So the project consisted of remediating the Brownfield site and then capping it with the asphalt parking lot. So the total contract was two million, three hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, but the contract had two parts, so we call those schedules. So Schedule A was to remediate, um, the Brownfield, and Schedule B was to actually construct the contract, or excuse me, construct the, um, parking lot. So the two schedules, or, excuse me, the two schedules totaled that amount, the two-point-three million dollars, and then council also approved a fifteen percent contingency for three hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine. So this contingency was to cover any anticipated costs associated with both schedules. So the good news is to date, the solar remediation has, has been completed. Um, but unfortunately, we encountered a lot of, um, material that weren't, identified in the, in the original investigation of the site. And so what we typically do is we do environmental investigations and geotechnical investigations. And they do a few core samples throughout the site to get this representative, um, understanding of what it looks like below the surface. We don't do this detailed grid because it's cost prohibitive. Well, we found more, about thirty, thirty percent more hazardous material. We found tires. We found a hundred gallons of oil contained in containers that all had to be disposed of at special disposal sites that are located in northeast Oregon. And so we had an overrun. This, important to note that this would have been a cost that if we did have, um, that understanding of what was below the surface at the beginning of the project, our quantities in our bid would have represented that, so we would have paid this anyways, but it is quite of a, it's quite a big overrun. So the change order proposed was three hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. That exceeds the original approved contingency for both schedules by a little over twenty-five thousand. So staff's recommending increasing the contingency to cover the costs associated with change order one, and adding a fifteen percent contingency for Schedule B, that's the construction of the parking lot. So that'll be, um, increasing the original contingency from three forty-seven, nine forty-nine to six hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four. So just a little budget, um, background, um, this is a loan through the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. It's, uh, through the State Revolving Fund. It's our sponsorship option. It's a non-point source project. The idea is we do these green parking lots, these, um, stormwater projects, and then we get a reduction in our larger point source loan. In this case, it was the Plant Two project that was online constructed as of two thousand and eighteen, and we get a reduced interest rate on those larger point source projects. So we, we, we're going to get a one percent interest rate for that large project. Um, D E Q has reviewed this change order. They've approved it, and it is not going to increase our current loan because there was contingency also built into that loan. So if we don't expend the full amount of that loan, then we only pay for costs incurred.
So the bottom line is for everyone to understand, for the public, this is not costing taxpayers of the city of Coos Bay any more money because of the Brownsville situation and the, the, uh, tax rate that we're, I mean, the loan rate that we're able to get.
Reduction in interest rate for the larger loan.
They specifically do this for this type of project, and to get us to do these type of projects, correct? Okay. So this is on Front Street, everyone, and it's been going on for five years, six years, something like that. It's been a long time and a long process, but we're finally seeing the end of the road, and, uh, it'll get finished up by.
Summer.
Okay. And, uh, I, I was walking down there, as I do, and I couldn't believe the amount of, I don't know, garbage and tires and everything that was hauled out of there, and I was asking the, uh, people that were working on it about it, and they told me these were buried in there, and it was kind of a surprise, so. I shouldn't have been surprised, but it was a surprise to see the quantity it was. They took truckloads of it, so.
I think it's important to note, too, that had the city not stepped in on this project, we had, um, an environmental, a very serious environmental issue right on the water's edge, um, and this might not have been cleaned up. So it was, uh, it was a good investment.
I agree with councillor Kilmer, and we always talk about parking, uh, down on Front Street, so to have a green parking lot that I think, please don't quote me on this, will give us approximately fifty additional parking spots, um, I think is beneficial, and, um, if not us, then who? And, uh, so I'm really proud that we stepped up and did this.
Yeah, I, I don't think anybody else would have taken on that lot. Five to six years is a long time, but we also have to remember in Coos Bay's history how long there were shipyards down there.
True.
My, uh, grandpa and great-grandpa worked at Hillstrom's that was across the way, and that lot is where they would dump the excess paint cans when they would go buy more paint from Schneider's. So, it, it was there a long time. It's going to have a lot of stuff under it.
Yeah, different times.
Yeah.
But, uh, if the urban renewal agency with Brownsville and D E Q stepped in to do this, it wouldn't get done privately. There's no one that could afford this. This, today, is a three-million-dollar project. So, that's not even without the cost or the purchase of the property, which was, uh, negotiated because we knew what we were going to be running into, so, anyway. So with that said, council, how would you like to move forward on this?
Is it okay if I, uh?
Question, absolutely.
Add two cents?
No, you can add four cents.
Uh, because I, I look at this, and it kills me to see that, that dollar amount associated with the parking lot. And I would also say that I'm probably the first one to say, we need less regulation. But I think we're in this position and having to pay this because we didn't have any codes or anything set up, and all this stuff was left there. And I think even I have to remind myself, sometimes that's why we make these rules, is so that when we go into the future, things aren't left a mess like that for those who come next. And I think we do all want a pretty, you know, successful city. Uh, but it's, that number still kills me when I realize it's a parking lot. But I, I agree with you, Joe. The point is, private, private capital wouldn't, couldn't do this. They couldn't make the numbers work, so I'm glad we're taking care of it.
And we're able to make it work also because, uh, you know, D E Q did lower the loan rate to make this profit, or, uh, so we could afford it. Otherwise, we couldn't afford it either.
That's what I was going to say. What, what is the loan for the Phase Two project, just roughly?
The, the Phase Two or the Plant Two?
Plant Two.
Plant Two is twenty-four million.
So twenty-four million, we're getting for one percent?
Correct.
That's, that's like free money, so. I mean, in, in the private industry, one percent, you would be chomping your bits at, so. If we were, if we had to do that loan at standard industry rates, that right now are around eleven percent, that would cost us a fortune. So just the money we're saving in the interest alone is, is worth, worth the project.
But we wouldn't get that interest rate unless we did these type of projects.
That's, that's, that's my point, so.
I'll move to increase the contingency for the North Front Street Green Parking Lot project from three hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars to six hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars for a total contract amount not to exceed two point, excuse me, two million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendment to Front Street Green Parking Lot. Any of the comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. Okay, uh, I don't know if anyone has an old agenda, but, uh, we're waiting for, uh, one of them was Mingus Park Pool Waste Water and Treatment Plant Boiler Replacement Projects. The bits came in, and, uh, as it was stated to me, they're a little wonky. The bits came in and, uh, as it was stated to me, that's a little wonky, uh, new terminology, but, uh, therefore we won't be addressing that tonight. We'll be getting it at the next council meeting. I love that comment, so thank you. All right. Next item is public hearing to consider a declaration of state of emergency to address the fentanyl crisis and enhancement of ordinance amending Coos Bay Municipal Code. Nicole, you want to give us the details?
Yeah, so what I'm going to do is actually start us out. This is coming to us from councillor Farmer's, um, work. What we know is that the city of Portland was encouraged, um, with connection with the governor to, uh, make a declaration of emergency in response to where we all kind of are right now, uh, in the fentanyl crisis. So it's a two-piece, um, bit of, uh, information you have before you. That's the declaration, um, which we like, like we usually try to do is save some time and energy and kind of pool from what's already out there. So this is Portland's version made to Coos Bay's, um, specs. Nate kind of helped work through that. And then, um, we also have an ordinance and the intent of this ordinance, as we recognize that we can't create a law that we may not have capacity to, uh, enforce because it's not on the books for the state of Oregon, the intention is to put this in place as we see, uh, the potential for measure one ten to have some revisions come through. We will then be ready, uh, when those revisions come through to enforce a law that is, uh, around some of these other drugs. So our, um, our ordinance now doesn't necessarily handle that. So we'd have to come to you after the state did their work, uh, you would pass that ordinance, we'd have thirty day, and so there's a timeline associated with that, and we want to be ready. So, um, councillor Farmer, if you want to add anything?
Sure. The ordinance is the easy bit, really. Um, we can't do any, we can't police it right now, but currently at the legislature, there are a number of efforts going through to recriminalize the possession of controlled substances and the public usage of controlled substances. Uh, so this is, uh, this ordinance is to get ahead of the curve essentially. And it puts something on the books that we can show when we want to ask for other things out of the state in, in my eyes. That's the idea. The emergency declaration, uh, Chris had brought to my attention when we talked, uh, that he was working on an emergency declaration around, uh, fentanyl and had been working with the county over it. Gave me an idea. I looked at some of this. I found where Portland was already doing it. The governor had already given direction to do it. Uh, the feedback he was getting and that I got at the commissioners was that it's not something they can actually do. They said they can't pass an, uh, emergency, a declaration of emergency around fentanyl use or homelessness and these different things. So I researched and found where the governor told the city of Portland and the county of Multnomah to do that exact thing. So it seemed pretty clear it can be done. Still no progress there, so I brought it back here. I took, uh, what the governor directed the city and the county up there to do. I turned it into things that could apply to Coos Bay. Chief Chapnar and Nate went through it and made it something that would work a little better for us and, uh, be a little cleaner because it's always going to get a second pair of eyes on something Portland does. But, uh, that, yeah, it, it put together into this, and my intention behind this is that it opened the door, one, for the county to see, yes, this can be done and to move forward with a declaration of emergency on their part. And two, so that we can establish things we want to see, uh, based on what was already offered to Portland, because if they're going to receive it, there shouldn't be any reason we can't receive it. So Portland had already received eight Oregon State Police Officers just for them to patrol on bicycles throughout the city, and they got more police because this is going through. I would like to see them give us some individuals to help staff the jail as a temporary measure because it's not a permanent solution. The idea behind that is I would also like to see the county request assistance from the Department of Justice to offset the DEA's office. They're behind fourteen hundred cases right now. We need the police to staff the jail so that there's capacity if we start to catch up with the fourteen hundred cases. Governor also directed ODOT to award twenty million dollars to Portland to, uh, clean up graffiti and garbage. That was in the same timeframe that ODOT announced it wasn't going to have enough money to maintain the highways during winter conditions throughout much of the state. Little frustrating, but if they can give them twenty million dollars and the season is over, I'd like to see how much money they can give us because the road out to the beaches sits on a highway. Uh, different roads throughout the city are also highways. One oh one is a highway. And then part that's kind of trying to get ahead of a problem is that Portland was going to be given a sort of priority on their, uh, Department of Public Safety and Standards Training. Uh, so that's the police academy, if I'm not mistaken, chief. Uh, so i- if they're going to get priority, if they're going to have a lot of cops, I would like to make sure we get in the priority first before any of the other two hundred and thirty-nine cities after us in Portland get into it. And yeah, that's kind of the scope of that request.
So Drew or Nicole, Nate, chief? So does this, uh, is it separate or does it have to be tied into measure one ten? I mean, can we enact this without measure one ten being, uh, revisioned or not?
Believe we can because the, well, Nate's got it.
Yeah, yes, we can. I mean, what we're doing is we're passing ordinance in anticipation of a change in one ten. Um, the idea being, as, um, Nicole mentioned, that it, assuming one ten changes in some fashion, so that now you can essentially criminalize once again the possession and use of drugs in, in, in public, um, that we have, uh, an ordinance in place to, that, that Chris and his, and his, and his crew can, can go after and enforce immediately, um, as opposed to trying to then, once one ten has been changed, um, then enact the ordinance. Uh, the ordinance itself doesn't become operative until that change to one ten occurs. I, I should clarify that. It, it's on the books, but you really can't enforce it until one ten changes. So that's, that's the game plan, and I, I see nothing inappropriate with doing that. The one thing I will say is in our draft, we, we're making the possession or use of class C misdemeanor. Uh, it really is up to the state to make that decision, and if their, if their decision is that it should be a violation as opposed to a misdemeanor, we'll probably have to live with it, the state does.
Okay, so, um, I'm going to, anyone else got questions?
Would that then just be, um, a change that we have to make at a meeting?
I, I don't think we need to make a, a change in it. It's, we don't know exactly what, what, what the, what's going to come out of the, the legislature and the, and the governor's office. But we are setting it up so that there is a viol- I mean, that, that there, that there's a violation of our ordinance, and if the change to one ten, uh, doesn't mirror, um, the penalty phase we have here, then we just have to enforce the, the penalty phase set forth by the state statute. We can't be inconsistent with that. We could, we can, no, we can't do more, we can't do less. We've got to follow the state in that regard.
Okay, and then one other question. Councillor Farmer talked about, um, money, um, and that is really a separate issue from what we're talking about here. And we wouldn't have control over that if, because those are county positions and county,
Yeah, I think that's what his, his game plan is to kind of force the issue maybe with the county, that they make the same change, and then, uh, between the Coos Bay, city of Coos Bay and Coos County, putting some pressure on the governor's office and legislature to maybe help us out a bit.
But just for clarification, that doesn't put police on bicycles.
No, that in itself doesn't do that, or horses or anything else.
But if, if I'm clear, I think that, um, uh, the changes have been approved by the senate and the house, and now they're, uh, at, on Governor Kotek's, uh, desk to hopefully sign. That is correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, that being the case, uh, now I'm going to open the public hearing to consider a declaration of state of emergency to address the fentanyl crisis and enactment of an ordinance amending the Coos Bay Municipal Code. Anyone like to come forth and make a comment about this was, this would be the time? No? All right, I'll close the public hearing. And council, how would you like to proceed?
And I would suggest you take one at a time.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll do this, uh, alrighty, thank you.
I'll move that we, uh, enact the public consumption ordinance. Oh, I was just making sure I read enough about prohibiting consumption.
Okay, all right, so, uh, for clarification, let's see, so, uh, a motion was made to, uh, enact declaration of state of emergency, right? Address for the fentanyl crisis, is that correct?
I think we have to do the ordinance first.
Oh, oh, the ordinance amending Coos Bay Municipal Code. Gotcha. All right. So, uh, there's a motion by Drew. We have a second?
Second, yeah.
Okay, and roll call? Right?
Aye. Yes.
Councillor Crivitt?
Yes.
Councillor Matthews?
Aye.
Councillor De novo?
Aye.
Mayor Benetti?
Aye.
Councillor Farmer?
Aye.
Councillor Kilmer?
Aye.
Councillor Stevens?
Aye.
Ordinance number five seven four has been duly enacted.
And I'll move that we approve the declaration of a state of emergency to address the fentanyl crisis.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve the declaration of the state of emergency, uh, of the fentanyl crisis and enact, uh, that's it, leave it at that. All right. Uh, again, let's do the roll call on this. Okay?
Councillor Crivitt?
So, no, we're questioned, we're done talking, right?
No, you can, go ahead.
Just so this, this really has no impact right now? We're just?
Not, well, according to Nate, and I don't want to speak for him, but he's, if I understand what he said, is that this is on the books to be enforced, uh, once measure one ten is enacted, the.
Yeah, I mean, the, the state of emergency is, that, that's your ability to say, we, we have an emergency, and then the ordinance is what gives the, the teeth to, to it effectively.
So the state of emergency is basically a request for state or federal dollars to help us?
Yeah, I think that's the, the game plan, that's the idea.
Thank you. Roll call still?
Councillor Crivitt?
Aye.
Councillor Matthews?
Aye.
Councillor De novo?
Aye.
Councillor Benet- uh, Mayor Benetti?
Aye.
Councillor Farmer?
Aye.
Councillor Kilmer?
Aye.
Councillor Stevens?
Sarah, are you there? Oh, she was there.
Sorry, I said aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all the business before us. Uh, we're at public comments, so, uh, the public comments period is designated for topics not already included on the agenda and is intended for the public to share ideas and concerns. It is not intended for interactive discussion with the council. There may be opportunities for the public comments during specific agenda items. Members of the public area requested to confine their remarks to questions or issues under discussion during that time. During any designated comment period, individuals shall not engage in personal attacks, shall not impugn the motives of any speaker and shall at all times while in session conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. No person shall make personal, impertinent slanderous or unauthorized remarks or become boisterous while addressing the council. If you do so, no, if you do, if you do not follow these rules, you may be asked to leave. Uh, no one signed up for public comments?
I feel that I did.
Are we got the right sheet here? City, city council.
Are you, are you Mr. Connor?
Yeah.
Okay, you signed up on U R A.
So, so you want to do the council or you want to do U R A or you want to do both?
I have no idea.
Okay, why don't you just come up? All right, why don't you come on up?
Basically, this is just a reminder of, uh, of.
Uh, can you give your name and where you, just where you reside? What city? That's all.
Uh, my, my name is Mike Power. I reside in, uh, Coos Bay.
Thank you.
Okay. And, uh, basically in my, uh, files, I've been doing a lot of studying on bicycling and liverboating in the city, pedestrians and all this sort of stuff, and I've gone through some of the old history of, uh, Coos Bay. And in May of two thousand and fifteen, there was a proclamation, and I think some of you may be well aware of it. Um, I got a few copies here which I can pass around, but it's, uh, whereas the month of May has been, uh, you're going to have to excuse my reading, celebrated as National Bike Month since nineteen fifty-six, um, promoting, uh, bicycling as a potential to increase overall physical activity, tourism, and cost benefits, et cetera, et cetera. Coos County Reds of Public Health promote bike and fun. Whereas Coos Bay in cooperation with the state highway division designated Highway two four three as a continuation of the Oregon bicycle route and has endorsed the need for this coastal route to recognize its benefits to tourism. Uh, Coos Bay promotes safe biking and walking for citizens and visitors as is evidenced in, uh, by current and past projects which have resulted in increased bicycle lanes and sidewalk connectivity in the city. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that this Crystal Shoji, who was mayor at the time, um, proclaimed May two fifteen as Bike for Fun and Health National Bike Month, so on so forth. Also with that, I have a little, uh, thing here, which is the, um, city of Coos Bay Agenda Staff Report. And, uh, this is, uh, to Mayor Shoji, uh, from Jackie Mickelson, Executive Assistant, through Roger Craddock, City Manager, and the issue is Bike for Fun, Health and Proclamation. And the background, you know, it's two minutes, okay. The background is for, um, um, supporting Bike for Fun and Health National Bike Month, um, and the opportunity to improve the health of all county residents by supporting and participating in Bike for Fun Health National Bike Month related opportunities, events, and so on so forth. Um, Bike for Fun Health National Bike Month is in line with Coos County, in line with Coos County two hundred and thirteen, two thousand and sixteen Community Improvement Plan, which specifically identifies the following issues, goals, and objectives supporting bicycling in our community.
I was suggesting get to the point because you're.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm trying to, okay. And in, in here, it's to promote pedestrian and bike friendly community, um, it's to increase travel opportunities, support of viable recreation. Then at the bottom here, it says that Coos Bay has demonstrated its desire to promote healthy transportation options as demonstrated through the following projects. South Empire Multi, one minute, Multi Model Project, um, Bicycle Lanes and Sidewalks, which I'm familiar with, and then this is the, the good one here, Highway one, one oh one Fence Sidewalk Project, which will add sidewalk on the east side of Highway one oh one from the Historic Train Museum to Front Street. This project is coming under construction. Well, right there is where they painted over the bike lane, and it's still painted over. So there's a lot of things that really should be looked at as to, a lot of this has never happened. You know, it's not a safe, Coos Bay is not a safe place to ride your bike. It's not a safe place for pedestrians. We've got a lot of, a lot of, there's a lot of work needs doing, but it probably needs a commitment from the city, um, to look at, to see if they want to go ahead with any of this, this, this written here, because some of us would like to bike in the city and would like to ride our bikes and do it safely. So that's my, my point. I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention, but I'll give these copies so you can pass them around and have them for your files.
Thank you.
Did I make it? Thank you.
So, um, you're not the only one that's brought this to our attention. There's, uh, some other individuals that have, and we're moving forward on trying to find bike lanes that will work. In fact, we put some individuals on our parks commission specifically for that. Uh, so, uh, yes, you are correct, uh, there, there's some attention that needs to be done for the bike, uh, biking community and, uh, visitors. So it's something that, uh, we are addressing, uh, and some people are real passionate about it. Carmen Matthews, who's our councillor, is passionate about it. Some others have come forth. Uh, the, uh, individual that has the bike store on Front Street, uh, has really kind of spearheaded this. I think he's on the committee, I believe. The individual that has the bike store on Front Street has really kind of spearheaded this, I think he's on the committee, I believe. And so, yes, we are going to give attention to it, so, thank you for bringing it to our attention, though. Okay, that being the end of the public comments, we'll move on to council comments, so... Oh, you signed up? Okay, come on up. Sorry about that. We have too many lists around here.
No, I understand, my name is Lisa Patelley, and I live on El Rodav in Coos Bay, and I just wanted to draw the council's attention to a lot of excessive trash. There's a green belt on South 11th Street, it's, and there's a ton of wrappers and trash, but there's also hardware, I've noticed a stereo receiver, and I'd be happy to help facilitate the cleanup. One issue with it is, it's a kind of a steep incline, so a lot of trash just sort of cascades down. And this would be specifically right before you get to the Wellness Center on South 11th Street. Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, so Nicole, can we address that?
We can certainly talk about that tomorrow in Department Head Meeting and draw some attention to that and go check it out and hopefully get some resolution, yeah.
Alright, and if you want to help participate, if you, you want to give us your name and phone number, or Nicole, I should say, we'll be glad to get in touch with you about that, alright? Alright, thank you. Alright, did I get everyone on the list that are out there, alright? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, public comments, excuse me, and now council comments. Sarah, you want to start us off?
Thank you for meeting today, thank you.
Alright, thanks, Carmen, anything?
Mostly just wanted to say thank you to the member of the public, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the name, but who brought up the biking. I think this is a really great thing to just keep bringing to the forefront of our minds and see what we can make happen. I will just kind of update you, Parks Commission is really excited to move forward on how we can help in terms of making the bikeability of Coos Bay a reality. We are working on some grant opportunities for safe routes to school, and I think that there's a lot of promise there, and we're thinking about it all the time. And so, there are people looking at it and just trying to get creative and working on some of these issues that have been sitting on the shelf for honestly far too long. So, I appreciate you bringing that up, and I just also want to say that I'm really excited to see the Front Street green parking lot moving along, and I completely agree with Counselor Crivens' assessment of things. It's interesting to always, you know, as we're building things, we're like, man, there's so many hurdles, but this is kind of the reason, showcases the reason why we have to have protocols in place to protect the environment, protect our natural asset, natural assets as much as possible. Otherwise, we have to do a lot of remediation that's just extremely costly and eventually, you know, has to be taken on by a larger entity, i.e. the city. So, this has been kind of an eye-opener for me as well, and I'm glad we're getting it done. I'm glad, you know, we're here to be able to jump in on this, and I'm extremely grateful to the Department of Environmental Quality for providing the framework to do projects like this. I mean, the 1% loan and being able to use that finance, you know, that interest on additional projects is just like such a creative way to forward the goal of the Department of Environmental Quality. So, it's just kudos to that organization for making that available, and maybe we should take a look at how they do that, and maybe there's ways that we can become a little bit more creative in the way we help achieve our goals for individuals in this community. But that's all I have for today, I just want to say thank you, cheers.
Thanks, Carmen, Drew?
Drew, just a quick update on the meeting I had yesterday, because I met with the Emergency Management Department for the state and Oregon Military Department about the five acres ODOT land and the five acres at the National Guard Depot. ODOT, sounds like that's going to be doable, so I'm going to have to start pushing them towards staff, because that's not my place to do, but their main thing is, they asked me what I, they asked me what we figured we would pay for it, to which I told them, your report said surplus. So, I don't think they'll give it to us for free, it turns out, but they did say that they just need to make the state treasury whole. So, it was purchased with state treasury funds, I don't know how many years ago, but it was definitely more than five, so it would be a steal for five acres of land that could turn into housing. So, hopefully that'll keep moving a little bit. The other one was the longer shot, I wanted the National Guard Depot land, it's five acres, and they have like two people in it, the unit there drills out of Roseburg now. It is, it's actually been remediated for all the lead contamination for the shooting range in the basement. But they told me they're going to start using it again, the 183rd Charlie Company is going to be based out of there again, I believe it was, infantry unit, they're going to resume drilling. However, it is five acres not being fully utilized, so I did also talk to them about, maybe you can give me a part of it. I would prefer housing, but that other conversation came up, maybe that would be a better place for something like the Deveraux Center, the Deveraux Center, some form of what I refer to as the triage site, where you find out who's going to make it off the street, who's not ready to do it right now, and then just try and keep everybody functioning while you, while they get there. They mentioned training for emergency, so I did pose the idea to them that they would be hard-pressed to find a consistent disaster that is more of a disaster than Oregon's housing market. So, they might go along with me on that, or at least give us a portion of the five acres. Currently, the Deveraux sits on less than an acre, or if it can turn into housing, like we saw with the Inglewood Project, two acres can turn into 40 units, so we'll see where it goes.
So, Drew, this was the armory, then?
Yes, the armory near the new Taco Bell and Empire.
Okay, thanks, Lucinda?
Two things, I wanted to first thank Counselor Farmer for all of his work to bring that ordinance to us. I think it's been incredibly proactive, and you did a lot of work and due diligence to, and a lot of research to make that happen, so thank you, and thank you to staff as well for your work on that. And I also wanted to remind everyone that we're very excited, this weekend is the South Coast Clambake Music Festival. I think it's been 34 years, I'm hoping Counselor Kilmer might remember, but that will be in this community, the 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th, at the Mill Casino. So, if you are interested in listening to some really great bands that they bring every year, please go to their website, the South Coast Clambake Music Festival, that's all I have.
Thanks, Stephanie?
It's been a long time, that's all I can say. I will add to that, though, if you haven't had the opportunity to attend that, try to maybe make it to a couple of things. I forced my young, my daughter, when she was younger, to sit through the Evolution Band, and I said, we just have to, we just have to sit there for 45 minutes, and bought her all kinds of candy and junk food to eat while she was there, and we ended up staying all day. And she was sold on it, she played band clear through college, it got her a scholarship with the marching band, and, you know, just a different perspective, so you never know, you just never know. But it's an incredible thing that adds a lot to our economy as well as our culture in this economy, so I would encourage you to take some time, I wasn't going to say anything else.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Mayor Benetti, it's been 36 years, I just went on their website, so...
36?
36.
Corrected, alright, Troy?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
I have one short comment, and then we'll go to the City Manager's Report, that's for last, right? Anyway, I just went by this morning, the third and central parking lot, it looks great. We'll have 14 parking spots, and it's a lot better than it was. It's going to be a public space for a lot of others to do a lot of different things, farmers market and other activities and festivals, so it's great to see it almost done, anyway, thank you, Nicole?
So, I don't know, I learned today another fun little bit about that parking lot. We are going to also, and I don't know if this is fair, I'm going to go there, but only because I'm really excited about it. We are doing a project with Coos Watershed, and it is going to involve purchasing, there's some funds that became available for this, and so we're going to purchase some, and it's specific to community education, a movie system to be able to show some outdoor films on a screen in our great new parking spaces there. So, we're kind of excited about that, I think we've got a couple of documentaries that have been discovered. Obviously, give us a run, they are going to maintain the equipment and do all the setup and stuff with us. It focuses on some of the work that they do, so, I wasn't going to share that, but you, yeah, brought it there, so...
I opened the door, right?
Yeah, yeah, what I did, and so thank you for circling back, because I do have a couple of things. One thing I was hoping we would kind of address tonight, as we might remember, we were just discussing the updates to the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan, and the formation, within that plan, there is some committee formations that will come about, and I believe the county is about ready to start with that. What that does for us is gives us an option to designate someone who might have interest to sit on that committee for the city, that's either one of you here, or if you had interest, you know, we probably have a staff member who could sit on that committee. So, that's an action item, we were kind of hoping maybe could you get some feedback on, so we can let the county know, so...
I thought that we could also appoint a person at large if we wanted to. It did not have to be a staff person or a city councilor, is that correct?
Yeah, Chelsea?
So, there are, as we recall, there are three separate committees. The one that Nicole is bringing up is the Joint Steering Committee, which is the public bodies, entities that are like the local governments, and so that's where we would want one elected official or otherwise an appointed person to represent the city. Then we have the Technical Advisory Committee and the Citizens Advisory Committee, and those will have a citizen member at large from each community, but the process as being presented will be that those individuals who are vying for that seat will apply to the county, and they will, that form would come to the city, and then you would have a chance of, the people who have volunteered themselves, who have said, I want to be this, in this position, you could then appoint through that process, so there's, does that make sense?
Do you just want to clarify, so the City of Coos Bay can appoint one member at large on one of those committees?
Yes.
There are a volunteer?
For the Technical and Citizen Advisory Committee?
Yes.
Yes, a member at large.
Okay.
Yes, but this, we're asking for the Joint Steering Committee.
Yes, no, I just want to make sure that I'm clear, that we can, I don't think any of us would argue that we're an expert in that field, and so I think there are people out there that might want to volunteer their time, and so I just want to make sure there is that opportunity, and we as a council have the option of appointing someone at large.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
So, with regard to the Joint Steering Committee, what is the county doing? Are they appointing an elected official, or are they appointing a staff person?
Do you know that?
I don't know yet.
If the council said no, would Chelsea be our designated representative?
That could be your choice, yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, do we want to make a motion?
So, is everyone right with, is everyone right with Chelsea being our representative? Unless someone on the council has a...
I move that we appoint Chelsea Schnabel to be the representative for the City of Coos Bay on the Joint Steering Committee for the cabum.
Second?
To move and second to appoint Chelsea Schnabel as our representative. Any discussion or comments, hearing that, I'll call for the question, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, hearing that passes, congratulations, Chelsea.
I would also acknowledge Harv, and I'm probably going to totally butcher his last name, Schubach, is... Okay, he's online with us tonight, he is the new Executive Director for the Downtown Association, and I had the opportunity to meet with him yesterday. We had a really good, kind of just initial discussion, kind of talked about the agreement, how we've worked together in the past, how we are hopeful about how that looks like in the future. He will likely be showing up either in person or online, so he kind of stays on top of what we're doing. I do believe he will be here next time, just to do an introduction. This is the time that usually the Downtown Association would be coming to with their update. Three weeks in the seat, we're going to give him a little, a little grace and catch up before he comes back with anything of depth, but he will be here to introduce and kind of just speak shortly at your next meeting.
Nicole, you said that you reviewed the current agreement, forgive me, when is there an opportunity to renegotiate that agreement?
So, that's happening right now, so we're doing some internal work with them, and actually started previously, and he's kind of coming in to review and finish that up, and then we'll, I will bring forward what that recommendation might look like, and you guys will make those final revisions and decisions.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, and then, because we're talking about new folks, we had Catherine Scobie start with us yesterday. She is our Economic Revitalization Administrator, she is, comes from Bandon, she comes with a pretty strong background in data analytics and with the Department of Labor. And what that says to us is being able to kind of see what we need in our community here, and she's already connected with SCDC and is going to attend tomorrow the Chambers Meeting. So, hitting the ground running, obviously a big hill of work to do, but she's pretty excited, and we're happy to have her, so... And the last thing I was just going to share is that I will be going to the school district on Monday at their board meeting to give one more opportunity to ask questions about MPT. So, fingers crossed, we'll get that past the finish line and then can finish that up. Hopefully, in the coming months, we'll have to come to you with an ordinance, so it'll take a little bit of time to get that through and then active, so...
So, what time are you going to do that tomorrow?
It's on Monday, the 11th, and I believe it's 5:30, yeah.
Alright.
Can you quickly explain?
Yes, I can absolutely, so MPT is a statewide program, it's a multi-unit property tax exemption. It's intended to encourage housing development, but multifamily. We spoke about this, gosh, it's been a year, I think we were doing this last spring, about how you would want to lay that out in the community, it's prescribed by ORS, there are, you know, kind of some standards already set before for us to follow, but we do have some leniency in some things, so for example, you've selected four different ways in which people could use that within the city, and a wide range of affordable housing, market rate areas, there's a lot to it, it also comes with some pieces of amenities that bring some things to community, which can be as simple as green spaces, but it can be more complex as childcare facilities that are connected within a housing development, so. It is working in other communities, I think Florence saw an 80-unit complex, they hadn't had something for, you know, a couple of decades being built, and putting this in play kind of allowed for that project to pencil out. Essentially, we're looking for support from overlapping taxing districts to forego property tax on the development. The land tax would still be there for up to 10 years, so that's what makes it kind of pencil out for them.
Alright, so this is something we talked about, but for multifamily development, right?
Yes.
And so, right now, these are really vacant lands, we're trying to find a developer to incentivize them. This is one tool that we're doing, so it would be a tax exemption for 10 years, as long as they do a multifamily development unit.
Time's up.
Pardon? Yeah, your time's up, so anyway, but I want, also, just because we're going to the school district and asking, anything that they're lacking, the state will backfill, so the school won't lose any tax dollars on this. It really would be the other entities that could lose a small portion, but we feel at this point, if their empty land's not being developed this time, if we can get someone to do it, then it'll be a benefit to all, so, that's the intent. So, hopefully it'll work, it's worked in other communities, and we've kind of tagged their, what they're doing and initiated it here, so, anyway. Nicole, anything else?
That's it.
Alright, that being the case, we have an executive session, but I'm going to pause our council meeting, and we'll go into Urban renewal, and then we'll come back and go into executive session, so, I'll pause, and then you're on.
Do we need to take a couple of minutes to switch? So, don't go far, it'll just be a minute here. Alright, we are live, and so I'm going to call the meeting of the... All right, we are live. And so I'm going to call the meeting of the City of Coos Bay Urban Renewal Agency to order. Our first item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. How would you like to proceed?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, which is the acceptance of our financial reports. And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the adoption of a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement, the IGA between the City of Coos Bay and the Urban Renewal Agency for de jure financing. And we heard about that in the council meeting.
Melissa?
So as stated in ORS 457, Urban Renewal Agencies operate under tax incremental revenues. These revenues can only be spent towards payments against debt service. There are two ways to get access to the operational revenues. One is the lengthy costly process of conventional financing, going out for requests to finance banks, responding financial advisors, bond attorneys. This process is intended to cover long-term capital projects. The second option is the de jure financing. It's a short-term, quickly repaid loan that's initiated and done with the assistance of the city. The city will loan the funds and the Urban Renewal Agency will repay those funds. Those types of funds are intended to cover short-term projects, things like the improvement program grants. So what you have before you is a resolution to approve that de jure financing.
Thank you, Melissa. Is there any, are there any questions? All right. How would you like to proceed?
I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of Resolution 2411, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Coos Bay and the Urban Renewal Agency for de jure financing.
Second.
All right. And that's 24-01.
Sorry, 24-10.
01.
Of course, 01. I do. I knew that. I just didn't think I had time to flip over. Okay.
All right. So we have a motion to adopt Resolution 24-01, approving the IGA between the City of Coos Bay and the Urban Renewal Agency for de jure financing. And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And then we have public comments. I don't believe we had anybody. He spoke at the council meeting. Yes. Oh, Kristen. Chris is gone. Okay. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? That is all the business the Urban Renewal Agency has before them. So I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
All right. So now I'll reconvene the Coos Bay City Council. And we'll go into executive session.
City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. If the council intends to come out of an executive session to make final action, the presiding officer should announce when the open session will begin again. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions may be made in the executive session. It is anticipated that City Council will reconvene following executive session.
Sure he can. You set him up? Yeah.
He's buying dinner tonight.
He is? Really? You're buying dinner?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. All right, we're out of executive session.
The YouTube isn't running yet.
Yeah?
It's still buffering.
Going to catch up at some point, right?
We need this to be, make sure that this is recorded.
I see it as being live on YouTube. Christine?
I'm sorry?
Sarah, what did you say?
I said it's being, I see it being live. It's live on YouTube.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you.
Couldn't wait for Drew.
Right after we lost Drew.
Waited.
Couldn't wait 30 seconds.
Sorry, one thing. It is coming up as a URA board meeting?
Yes, it is. We will fix that in post-production.
Okay.
Well, she says it's up. It's just not showing here. I don't know. It just has to be. It does this from time to time. She says she's seen it up.
She sees that one?
She sees the meeting going on YouTube.
We've been waiting for you.
All right. We're out of executive session, back into regular session of the Coos Bay City Council meeting of March 5th, 2024. And so at this time, I would like to take this opportunity that we are announcing tonight that due to the budget challenges, we are ceasing negotiations on the West Lockhart property being considered as a new site for the Deveraux Center. We were recently made aware of the House Bill 515019 stipulates a smaller percentage of funding can be allocated to capital expenditures than originally budgeted, putting the property at West Lockhart Avenue well outside the capital expenditure allowance. The City of Coos Bay remains committed to moving the Deveraux Center to a location that allows for more space, intentionally functional, functionality, and the compounding of resources made possible by clustering services. In the meantime, the City of Coos Bay is working closely with the Deveraux Center at its address, addresses the challenges of serving grow, growing homeless population at its current location. Such an excessive garbage and unauthorized overnight stays, the Deveraux Center is actively exploring solutions that could be quickly deployed, including expanding fencing and around-the-clock security, even as this continues to serve our community members most in need. So that's the statement and the meeting's adjourned.